Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? At this time, at this time I'd like to introduce Walter Pasaic. He's going to be doing our Pledge of Allegiance. He's a WWII veteran, Korean veteran, and Vietnam veteran. And he's the last surviving veteran that was there on December 7th in 1941. And he's going to talk a little bit about that in a few minutes from now. But this time, he's going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. The floor is yours, Walter. Thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Great job, Walter. Can I have, okay. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, February 22nd, 2017, Board of Commissioners meeting to order, 10:00 AM, the Commissioners' conference room. I'd like to make a motion for the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to go right into proclamation presentations. Seventeen dash zero zero five seven proclamation proclaiming February 22nd, 2017, as Walter Pasaic Day. Walter, would you like to come up? Would you like to come up to the podium? Walter, you're the lone survivor of all the individuals that Chairman Spano of the 9/11 Committee put together for the memorial. There's like 100 and some. Charlie will talk about that in a few minutes. Walter, talk to us about, so you joined the Army. You're in Hawaii. Beautiful island. What happens that morning, December 7th, 1941?
Well, that morning, December 7th, it was a Sunday. I come out, I was scheduled to go on guard duty at 8 o'clock. I come out of the mess hall, and we were in an ammunition dump. A dump that was built out of an old volcano in the mountain dug in. And there was all types of ammunition and gas. Mustard, lewite, whatever you had. My job was to go on duty at 8 o'clock. Before that, maybe 7:30, a bunch of planes came flying out of Hickam and Wheeler Field. And we never thought anything about it until these planes started dropping torpedoes into the harbor. The place that I was at was Pearl City overlooking the harbor. An ammunition, a gasoline storage tank was blown up. And we said, "This is the real thing." And that's, they told us to get any kind of weapon we had and fire at whatever plane came over. The equipment that we had was in storage. It was water-cooled. It had no packing. It was useless. The only thing we had was your individual rifle. And that was not too good at all. It was useless. That's what happened.
So Walter, you were firing at the planes as they were going over? Well, you know, I know that the war was declared within a day. But that was the day that the line was drawn in the sand. That was the moment.
Yeah.
You were there for it.
Well, see, there was all kinds of rumors. There was rumors spread that the enemy has landed on the North Shore. So the outfit that I was with was picked to go over and investigate it. Went out to North Shore. Nothing there.
That's a part of history that I never heard of.
Right.
I didn't realize that, that there was, that they thought there might have been an evasion. That's amazing.
Wow.
Walter, lots of, you must have lots of friends that died that day.
Yeah, well, there was, there was a lot of confusion. And what could you expect, Sunday morning? You're coming out of breakfast and to find planes coming over the harbor, blowing up everything from here to hell.
That's amazing.
The amount of salvage that was scattered on the beach from Pearl City to Pearl Harbor was tons of, tons of ships. The boilers, the pipes, and everything. They just stacked them on shore for salvage. That was it.
I can't imagine. What were the days like afterwards, after the actual attack? Just clean up and try to save people who are still alive?
From then, I was sent to a Canton Island where they had Navy PBY boats. These boats, these planes landed on water. And the job of there was to look for submarines in the area.
Take her phone over closer to him.
Yeah, he's okay.
And that's what happened.
I can't even imagine what that day was like. You go to bed on Saturday night. You guys were probably out the night before. You never think anything's going to happen at that moment. I mean, there was a war going on in Europe, but it wasn't anything that we were involved in at that point.
Yeah, well, that was, from one island to the other, we start hopping. We went to Guadalcanal. Went to New Guinea, the Philippines, finally Japan.
You saw a lot for a young man. Real lot.
There's Ono Kanawa, too.
Commissioner Cummings?
That's an amazing story, and I appreciate you being here. And thank you so much for your service to our country.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Notariani?
Thank you for your service. Your story, it's great to hear a story like this firsthand.
Thank you very much.
It's amazing and...
I don't dig these things. I'm just a normal person that comes and goes and does his job when it's needed.
Thank you.
You're truly a hero to all of us. And it really matters, and we're so happy to have you here today. This time, I'd like to just bring up the Chairman of the 9/11 Committee. This undertaking started about two years ago. We started to find the people, Walter, from our community who were actually at Pearl Harbor. And we didn't realize how many people, Charlie, going to, how many people there really were in Pearl Harbor. And this past October, we were on the impression there was approximately 31. Charlie, take it from there.
After we did the, well, thank you Commissioners for allowing us to have this opportunity. And I want to point out, Walter is a hero. When he was in the Korean War, he led his squad against the machine gun nest. He was wounded by a grenade fragment, had blood over his eyes, shot in the arm, and still threw a grenade and destroyed the nest. For that, he was awarded the Silver Star.
For gallantry.
Right. When we began this project, we weren't sure how many people there would be. Our sense of the situation was there could not be more than 30 or so. After we unveiled the proposed plaque late in November, I started getting emails and phone calls. Well, my father was there, my uncle was there, my grandfather was there. My mother was there. And as we talked about on December 7th at the courthouse, there was one civilian woman who had previously been an Army nurse. When she got married to her husband in Georgia, regulations required she resign. She resigned her commission, but followed him to Pearl Harbor. So we had three women. And as of two days ago, the plaque that will be installed on April the 18th will contain 108 names of Lackawanna County veterans who were at Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941, 75 years ago. We chose April the 18th because that will be the 75th anniversary of the raid on Tokyo led by Colonel Jimmy Doolittle, which was the first response by the United States against the Empire of Japan. And it's also worth noting that June of 1942, in the Battle of Midway Sea, the Japanese fleet, including several of the aircraft carriers that attacked Japan, were demolished by the Army Air Forces and the military. So within six months of the attack on Pearl Harbor, the military back of the Empire of Japan was broken. And they never won a battle after that. Walter was there throughout the Pacific, in Korea, and in Vietnam, until he retired from the military. And it was my great pleasure to read about all these people, to talk to their families, and to meet Walter. And I'm very happy that you all have taken the time to recognize him. I want to introduce also his niece Diane and his sister-in-law Jean. Diane and her family live in Endicott, New York.
Thanks for coming in today, Diane and Jean. Thank you for being here. This is a special day for Walter. It's his day in Lackawanna County.
Thank you, we appreciate it. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is my favorite picture. Here's Walter in front of the newspaper. That's my favorite. He's got his Budweiser shirt on. That's right, American-made, right?
I'll have one on you.
You absolutely, you absolutely will. You know, this is just a momentous occasion. We, when this undertaking started two years ago, we started it actually on the steps of the Marine Corps League, which is, works very closely with the 9/11 Committee. And it was a hope, a dream, and we were hoping that we'd be able to accomplish on actually the 75th anniversary. We did, sort of, except for the fact that there were so many other people that were from Lackawanna County, which we never expected. And they all showed up, their family and relatives, and they all came forward because it really mattered. Because everybody understood that the beginning of WWII started that day. And these people were defending themselves. Women, men, you know, the nurses, they were running out of supplies. They were trying to save the servicemen that were burning up from oil burns and shot and getting blown apart. And like Walter himself, they were shooting at the planes with rifles. Anything they had when they drew the line in the sand that day. And it just really matters. And for someone to come forward, Walter, you are living history. And this, you should be commended for coming in, for what you saw and what you've done for your country for 22 years. From WWII to Vietnam, your service, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the 214,000 citizens, thank you so much for what you've done. Thank you.
Right.
And...
Just if, I just want to make one more point about what you were talking about, about the number of people who stepped forward. Many of the people who contacted me by phone or by email are the descendants of the veterans. Walter is the last living veteran who was there that day. Many of the people live in other parts of the country. It took a long time for them to become aware of the news articles in the paper or the activity that we had going on. It's not like they all lived in Lackawanna County and suddenly decided that they were going to step forward. And many of them were like what Walter said, an ordinary people. They come, they go, they did their duty, and they went on.
But they did extraordinary things that day. It was an extraordinary day.
They did tremendous extraordinary things. They were the greatest generation.
They really, you really are.
And there was a little bit of reluctance on the part of some people to say, because they didn't, they didn't think much of, you know, it was just an ordinary thing that happened. They went, they did their duty, they survived, they came back, and they went to work.
They raised their families. They grew another generation.
Right.
They, the country took tremendous strides from 1945 forward. Really, the greatest generation.
Right.
Absolutely.
So they contacted me from all over the country, and it's been a tremendous honor for me to talk to them.
Thanks, Charlie. Let's just all bow our heads for a moment of silence for all those that lost their lives on December 7th, 1941. And for all of our heroes that are on our plaque who have died since the war ended, for their courage and for their, for their service. Thank you. Walter, we have a proclamation for you. Whereas Walter Pasaic, a 94-year-old resident of Saltscranton, is being recognized and honored for his service in WWII, was a WWII veteran, the last surviving Pearl Harbor veteran from Lackawanna County. Whereas on December 7th, 1941, Walter was a 19-year-old, 19-years-old, Army private stationed in Schofield Barracks in Hawaii Island of Wahoo when the Japanese attacked the American Pacific Fleet at Pearl Harbor, drawing the United States into WWII. And signed as a guard at an ammunition depot at Pearl City, he watched the devastation unfold. And you shot back. You had to. And it mattered. He served out the remainder of WWII in the Pacific, earning a Bronze Star and Purple Heart. Walter went on to serve in Korea, earning a Silver Star for gallantry. And really, that, what an amazing effort that was that day when you're in the Korean War and in action. He continued his overseas service in a military advisory role in Vietnam and concluded a 22-year Army career. Whereas he returned to the hometown of Scranton, Walter worked with Goodwill Industries, and he continues to remain very active in the community. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Notarian, and Lorraine Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim February 27th on behalf of the 214,000 citizens as Walter Pasaic Day in Lackawanna County. Thank you for your service. Everyone, before Walter exits this room, make sure you shake his hand because you're shaking hand with history that we should always keep in our hearts and always remember. And Walter, thank you for your service again. And would you and your relatives like to come up to the front so you could receive your proclamation? Just step up, Walter.
Be careful, don't step up.
Thanks, Walter.
Again?
Your pleasure.
That's your step right there.
Would you like to be on the other side, Fran, first? Or are you going to be behind me? Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Walter, no. Thank you, sir.
I'll take that beer anytime.
You're on. I'll be yoked, don't worry. Yes, it is. Thank you. It's your day.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Seventeen dash zero zero five eight. Small Business Spotlight. It's your day, Walter, that's right. Oh, I hope so, they should. He's, he's history. He's amazing.
Yeah, he's awesome.
I gotta buy him a Budweiser. You're welcome. Thank you, thank you for being here today, all of you. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, you know, there's, it's crazy, but you know, there's heroes among us all the time. And I'm sure there's people that might not even know that, know Walter, what he did in WWII, they're on his block. And that's what, I mean, that's where our history is. And you know, the brave people of our country, especially Walter. What a, what a great man. And he's looking pretty, pretty young for his 90s. Looking very good. Okay, seventeen dash zero zero five eight. Small Business Spotlight, Lavender Goose, Commissioner Cummings.
Who do we have here from Lavender Goose?
We have Joyce in Georgia here today.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about your business.
I'm a small gift shop florist. We do gift baskets, balloon decorations, wedding invitations. We're located in Peckville on 1536 Main Street. And we've been in business 28 years.
Wow.
And we're going strong.
So what made you start the business?
Um, I kind of, I did nursing, and I wanted a change in my career. And I really liked doing things with flowers and creative items. So I thought, "Well, I'll try." And so we started as a home-based business.
Thanks.
And it grew, and we were in another location, also on Main Street in Peckville. Kind of outgrew that and moved to our current location, which is our final location.
And are you, is this a family business, then?
It's, my husband, George, and I, and one other person are the main people of it. We have extra delivery people that help us for holidays and that sort of thing.
That's, that's awesome. And you know, every, every time we have somebody come in, I like to hear their story because you are an inspiration to other people, whether you recognize that or not. And your story may help someone else who might be thinking, "You know, I really like to do this. I don't think I can make a business out of it, though." But you did it. You are here, you're a proven fact that it can be done. And you know, your, your story's amazing. And I so appreciate the fact that you had the courage to move forward with your decision to do something that you really like to do and sustain your family with that. That's an awesome story, and I am so proud to know you, so proud that you came in.
Thank you.
And so proud of your family that you've actually made this happen in our county and chose to stay here to do it.
Absolutely.
So God bless your, your business, your family. And thank you so much for sticking with it. And I'll be sure to make sure I stop by to see...
I would love that, that's great.
The fruition of your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Notariani?
Twenty-eight years can seem like an eternity in a business.
It seems, when I say it, I can't believe it, really.
Yeah. Every day's a struggle.
Yes.
And it's an adventure. But it's very rewarding dealing with the people. It's, it's a lot of fun.
It's extremely rewarding.
It's perfect. You gotta do what you love.
Yes.
You love what you do. And it makes it a lot easier. You're not going to work, you're going to have fun.
That's right. There's not a day I go in and say, "Oh, I have to go to work." I open the door and love it. That's how we are here, right? Yeah.
Congratulations and...
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, now Joyce. Now, behind every great lady, there's a great man, right? That's George, right?
That's George.
I've known George and Joyce for over 20-some years. They're hard workers. They really care about the community. And they put out a product that's second to none.
Thank you.
And it really matters.
Thank you.
To everybody throughout our county. Joyce, talk about phone number, address.
Oh, okay.
Email, wherever they can get to you. Let's talk about the business.
We have a Facebook page, Lavender Goose. We have a website, lavendergoose.com. We have, our phone number is 570-489-0380. We are at 1536 Main Street, which is near Fiorelli's. Is a good target to say where we are. We're open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 8 to 5. We make, we have evening appointments for bridal consultations. We're open on Saturday, usually just until noon because we're usually decorating and doing other things in the afternoon.
Big day that day.
It is a big day. We are usually, the storefront is usually closed on Sunday and Monday. However, we're usually working.
Talk about the product. Talk about what you do exactly.
We, we, we do a lot of different things. We have a lot of gift items, all different price points. We do gift baskets that are, again, all different goodie baskets, breakfast baskets, all different kind of baskets. We have a nice, on our website, you can get a good idea of what products. We love holidays, so we're geared up now for St. Patrick's Day and Easter.
You do balloons, you do all kinds of decoration type of stuff?
Yes, we, and we decorate, we'll, we'll do all kinds of decorations. Nothing's too small or too large. We can pretty much handle whatever. We're a florist, so we do everything. When we first started out, we were doing people's weddings. Now we're doing, I hate to say it, their children's weddings. So that's how long we're in business. So every important life moment from weddings, communions, christenings, graduations, birthday parties, and even funeral work, too, so.
They keep coming back because you do a great job. That's why, because of you and George.
Oh, thank you so much. We love our customers.
They do, too. I know they do.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
So today, we're offering a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Lavender Goose in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 22nd day of February 2017 by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Notariani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you. Come on up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I see it, because you're more nice than we're christening.
It's American dream right there, baby.
Congratulations, George and Joyce. And the viewing audience, make sure you, if you have an opportunity, stop at Lavender Goose.
Yes.
No, thank you. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Okay, ordinance first reading, seventeen dash zero zero four six.
This is an ordinance adopting and setting forth a service charge for the Office of the County Coroner of Lackawanna County for the conduct of investigations prior to the issuance of a cremation permit. Whereas Act 152 of 1990 requires coroners in third-class counties to investigate the deaths of persons whose bodies are to be cremated, buried at sea, or otherwise disposed of. Whereas to date, the Lackawanna County has conducted such examinations without charging a fee. Whereas the county code provides that the coroner shall have duties, responsibilities, and authorities provided to coroners in counties of the third class. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County have the authority to enact and levy such an ordinance pursuant to the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter. Whereas the Board of Commissioners believes it is in the best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County at the direction and recommendation of the county coroner to impose a fee service for the issuance of cremation permits and investigation. Now therefore, it is enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County that the coroner of Lackawanna County shall charge a fee of $35 for every investigation he or she must conduct pursuant to Act 52 and subsequent issuance of a cremation permit. The county solicitors shall distribute copies of this ordinance when it is enacted. This is the first reading. A vote is not required. However, we're fortunate to have our distinguished coroner, Mr. Tim Rollins here, who will explain this ordinance a bit further to us at this time.
Good morning.
Rollins, how are you, sir?
I'm good. I'm good. First off, we've been charging the fee for, it's $25. We've been charging that for four or five years. I don't have the exact date when we did the resolution in the, in the very end, when we started doing it. And we were the, one of the last... And, uh, we were the, one of the last counties in Pennsylvania at that time to enact that fee. And since then, uh, many of the other counties have changed the fee on an annual basis. Um, this will be the first time we're increasing the fee from, uh, twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars. Um, in Luzerne County this year, there, uh, there was an article in one of the Luzerne papers, their fee went from twenty-five to sixty, I believe it was sixty. But Philadelphia charges much more than that. Um, but the fee is used to, uh, the, the law requires that, uh, on any death, if the person is to be cremated, first off, there's a twenty-four hour hold period where the body cannot be cremated. Obviously, that's, you know, if foul play was involved or something, you know, it's a period where the, the, somebody gets to look at the death. So, uh, i- in the case of any cremation in Lackawanna County, I mean, the process is, we receive a, a death certificate either signed by a physician, a nurse practitioner, uh, certifying the death of somebody that died medically. But, uh, we, in order to ensure that the cremation is done with no suspicion, we obtain medical records on all those people to, uh, review and determine that what is actually on the death certificate represents what the person actually died from. So, you know, since, in the, in my time here, um, we've never had a death where we've actually, you know, had to say, whoa, wait a second, we have to, you know, usually in that twenty-four hour period, we're able to get the records that we need to, to determine whether we need to autopsy the person or, or investigate any further whatsoever. So the, the cremation rate has gone up, uh, approximately a hundred cremations every year. Last year, we did sixteen hundred. The year before was fifteen-ten. You know, so it goes up about a hundred, you know, every year. Cremation is a, uh, a popular option for families because of the cost. And, and that's where we're at. So in raising the fee, I mean, this year alone, we raised the salary of one of our deputies, we took him from part-time to full-time. Um, uh, quite frankly, uh, we'll probably be in next year looking at, uh, maybe adding a deputy, you know, the call volume keeps going up. Uh, the drug deaths alone are, are voluminous. So, uh, you know, this is a way of recouping some of our costs. Any questions?
The board have any questions?
No, it's time.
Commissioner Niteriani? Okay. Thank, thank you for what you do every day. It's not an easy job, but thank you for what you do and your staff.
Thank you.
And we'll see you, uh, two weeks from now.
Two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, resolution seventeen dash zero zero three-nine?
First item on our Commissioner's Resolution today is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby appoint the following individual to the Disability Action Committee, Mr. Joseph Salva from Olive in Pennsylvania, for a three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty-first, twenty-nineteenth. And Mr. Keith Williams is here today, who may want to speak to the resolution briefly.
I'd like for Keith to come up, because Keith actually brought Mr. Salva forward. Gary, can you pull the mic over a little bit for Keith? He's gonna come right between you.
Uh, that's okay. Thank you.
Keith, thanks for coming in today.
Thank you, Commissioners, we appreciate the help, just briefly.
Um, yes, Joseph, Joseph Salva is, uh, president of a support group, which is called IAM. And that is, um, a volunteer network and support group of people who specifically have spinal cord injuries. But obviously, in conjunction with the Disability Action Committee, we all work together because every, you know, every member has a, uh, uh, may have a different type of disability or a different organization that they're affiliated with, but all working toward the same goal. So he and IAM, um, are both concerned about accessibility, integration, um, issues. And, uh, he's already been volunteering and contributing with, um, the development and the planning for our, uh, disability fair later on in the, well, late spring, early, probably early summer, um, now. And we, we know he'll be a valuable asset to the Commission.
Thanks for what you do every day, because you're making sure that, that everybody's taken care of. You really do. You come in and, um, bring in Mr. Salva forward, I'm sure that he'll be a great asset to your board.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you for the appointment and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Thanks, Keith.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Got it. I'd like to make a motion, appointment of Lackawanna County Disabilities Action Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Keith. Thank you very much. Thomas Salva, good luck.
We will.
Seventeen dash zero zero five-six?
Approving your current payables. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby approve the following payables. From Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers two-three-seven-seven-zero-zero through two-three-nine-oh-four-nine inclusive totaling three million nine hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling five million seven hundred thirteen thousand ninety-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, approve current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions?
Gary?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables on the agenda have been audited, approved, and paid. Uh, it should be noted that there were two invoices paid from McClure Company totaling approximately five thousand dollars. Originally, they were charged to the prison because McClure Company is doing work at the prison under the ESCO project. Um, but they've been correctly charged to the Lackawanna County Government Center for Work Reform there at the Globe Store.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, seventeen dash zero zero four-seven?
Approving your West Nile Virus Grant Application. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby approve West Nile Virus Control Grant Application. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection determined a grant award from January first, twenty-seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, in the amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. And Mr. Bill Davis, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, is here to explain the grant.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Bill.
Uh, this is an annual grant that, uh, we do with the Department of Environmental Protection. It's to fund our monitoring efforts through the West Nile Program. Uh, the one big change from, uh, the contract from the previous year is, we're gonna have a fifteen thousand nine hundred and four dollar addition to the grant. And that's to fund a, uh, college intern that's going to help monitor, uh, help the coordinator monitor the, the West Nile Program. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity for us because, uh, college students studying either environmental science or biology will get field experience and it's fully funded through the state, and it helps us with our monitoring efforts. So, uh, I thought it was a win-win and, uh, just so if you had looked at the difference, that's the main difference, uh, for the increase.
Good. So it's an opportunity to make sure we're safe, check out the West Nile, and we're also monitoring the Zika virus, we're also monitoring that too.
That's actually part of the grant. And then in addition, at the previ- uh, I think it was two meetings ago, we approved the, uh, gypsy moth spray program, and we're also participating in, uh, DEP's black fly uh, spray program as well. So our vector
That's bad, yeah.
Efforts this year, I'm sorry?
Black fly, that's bad, that's a problem.
Yes, well, we're, we're participating in that now and, uh, we've already made the contribution to it for the year, so we'll, uh, you know, we're, I think this is the, last year was the first year that we had ever participated in it, and, uh, we're gonna be just, we've budgeted for it, so it'll be an annual thing that we're gonna continue to do.
Yeah, that's really an issue, the Conservation Board was talking about that. There's another, uh, one I'll let you know about, but that's a big, big problem.
Always let us know. Okay, Commissioner Niteriani?
I'm good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the West Nile Virus Control Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Commissioner, while I'm here.
Would you like to talk about some of our programs that are gonna be coming up this year?
Yes, while I was here, I just thought I'd take the opportunity. Uh, all of our clinics and events for the year are now on the county website.
Turn it towards the camera so Mark can zoom in on it.
Uh, there's thirteen different programs, everything from soccer, basketball, uh, women's golf, junior golf, uh, there's a variety of programs here. And the one that's going on right now is the Winter Golf Clinic, and that started Monday, and there's a session tonight and tomorrow night, and it'll go on for four weeks. But then there'll be other events. So I just wanted to make a note, so people knew that, you know, when you're scheduling kids' events and things like that, that it's on the website so that they can plan for the summer.
Now, the winter golf lessons, you get a lot of people coming out for that, don't you usually?
We do, we do.
Good. So, uh So there's always activities, still good stuff going at the park even if it's cold out?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, like I said, it's on the website and they can also call the office if, uh, they ever have, have any questions.
Okay. You'll talk a little bit about the sleigh riding, like, I know there's no snow now, but how great was that a week?
Uh, we had a great turnout. Uh, I actually took my kids and, uh, the one Saturday, the, the hill was filled with people and they really enjoyed it. It was a great free event, uh, but it's also weather permitting, so
Yeah.
There's not so much now, but I was also there on Saturday and with the warm weather, we had people on the playground and also playing basketball. So, you know, we have stuff going on all the time.
This past weekend, I was back there. It was funny because, uh, four days before, we're back to sleigh riding, this weekend I was back there and we're, we're actually over at the playground here, my son is nine, and
Yeah.
There must have been five, six hundred people in the park easily, all throughout the park.
Yeah, I believe that.
Really matters.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Okay, seventeen dash zero zero four-eight?
Entering into an engagement letter with Mr. Brian T. Kelly. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into an engagement letter with Brian Kelly CPA to prepare work for the Office of Children and Youth for a period December thirty-first, twenty-sixteen, for a fixed cost of sixteen thousand dollars. Mr. Tom Durkin, our CFO, is here to answer any questions on the application.
Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is, uh, actually the third year of a three-year agreement with, uh, Mr. Kelly's firm to do the audit of the Office of Youth and Family Services. And the office tells me that they've done a great job in the past, and so we're just actually asking you to improve the engagement for another year.
Okay. Board have any questions for Mr. Durkin? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an engagement letter with Brian Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventeen dash zero zero four-nine?
This is an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn &amp; Associates. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter to an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn for the County Retirement Pension Plan Audit for the year December thirty-first, twenty-sixteen, at a fixed cost of ten thousand five hundred dollars. And again, Mr. Durkin is here to answer any questions.
Once again, Commissioners, this is an engagement with McGreal, Merkel, and Quinn, the incumbent auditors for the pension plan, pardon me. And, um, they've been doing the audit for the pension plan for at least the last five years. I, I didn't go back further than that, but this is again, a renewal of, of their agreement uh, from last year, and we're just asking that the Commissioners improve the engagement for two thousand sixteen.
Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn &amp; Associates. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventeen dash zero zero five-zero?
Entering into an engagement letter with Mr. Michael Barbetty. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into an engagement letter with Michael Barbetty CPA for Lackawanna Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs Audit for the year December thirty-first, twenty-sixteen, at a fixed cost of ten thousand five hundred dollars. I think after he signs these letters.
Once again, Commissioners, the Barbetty Firm, um, this will be the second year that you're doing the Office of Drug and Alcohol's Audit. Um, actually, when Bo Hoben was here last year, uh, he thought it was wise to engage Barbetty because Barbetty has done the BHIEDI, the, uh, MHMR office, and because of the unique interplay between those offices, they thought it was prudent to have the same firm do both. And again, Drug and Alcohol was very, very pleased with Mr. Barbetty's work last year, so we're asking again that the Commissioners approve an engagement letter for the two thousand sixteen audit.
Board have any questions for Mr. Durkin?
No.
I'd like to make a motion entering into engagement letter with Michael Barbetty. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventeen dash zero zero five-four?
Entering into an engagement letter with Joseph M. Alou &amp; Associates. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter an agreement letter with Joseph Alou &amp; Associates for the Redevelopment Authority Audit for the year into December thirty-first, twenty-sixteen, for a fixed cost of four thousand six hundred dollars. And again, Mr. Durkin is here to explain this agreement.
Uh, as the three previous engagements, uh, Mr. Lou has done the engagement for the Redevelopment Authority for a number of years, and we're asking the Commissioners to approve an engagement for the year into two thousand sixteen. I might add that with these four engaged auditors being engaged now, um, we have all of the auditors in place for all of the component units that we need to have audited, uh, as part of the county audit process, so, uh, we're moving forward on the county audit now.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Durkin? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an engagement letter with Joseph M. Alou &amp; Associates. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seventeen dash zero zero five-one?
This is entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into a medical assistance transportation agreement with Lackawanna County Medical Assistance Transportation Program to begin immediately and expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And Gretchen Winterman will here, is here from the County of Lackawanna Transit System to explain this grant to us.
Good morning, Gretchen.
Good morning, how are you? Um, the Pennsylvania Department of, uh, Human Services has changed the way that they want counties to invoice for the medical assistance transportation program. Uh, a single cost per trip had to be devised based on our overall expenses of the program, and the rate that we came up with is fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents for this agreement. Uh, the county would become, will, will become the administrator of the program and will be responsible to invoice, uh, the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, and then COLTS would be the subcontractor. Uh, Department of Human Services requires an agreement, uh, between the county and the subcontractor, which again, would be COLTS.
Does the board have any questions for Gretchen? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Gretchen, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Gretchen, just so you know, everybody enjoyed the trolley up at the ICE Festival up at Clark Summit, it was great, all the kids had big smiles on their face, it was, it was the best, it really was, going up and down the main street, it was the best. Seventeen dash zero zero five-two?
Entering into Area Agency on Aging Grant Amendment. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into a contract amendment between the Area Agency on Aging and its providers, Telefont, Senior Service Center, the Voluntary Action Center, the Allied In-Home Services. Mr. Jason Gilvold, our director of our Area Agency on Aging, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Uh, first on our list is the Allied Personal Care Services. We are increasing the Monday, or the Friday through Monday rate for them to twenty-eight-thirty, which is in line with the other providers that are already contracting with the agency for that same service. that same service. The second item is the Senior Escort Transportation. We're increasing, uh, the services to add another 887 units of service for the remainder of the year, uh, to make sure that our most needy seniors get to their medical appointments. The second, or the third item is the appraised telecenter and appraised counseling for our individuals that are seeking services, um, to assist them with their, their medical insurance decision-making. Um, that's a very important service. We're going to increase that to make sure that the program is whole for the, the rest of the fiscal year. And the, the last piece is the Health and Wellness Program. That is, uh, services that go to senior centers and into the community to help have our seniors stay active and stay fit. We're going to increase that to make sure that, that program can continue working until July as well. The last item is the Comfort Keepers, uh, contract. Comfort Keepers was bought out by a new provider and we had to issue a new contract.
Okay. Uh, does the board have any questions for Jason?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
Um, your personal care services are listing Monday, Monday through Friday. Now, this is 3:00 PM to 8:00 AM, that's the only rate you're changing?
The Friday through Monday rate we're, we're changing.
But it, it says, "Personal care services provided on emergency basis on a holiday will be reimbursed at $28.30 per unit." Recognized holidays include, and that gives a recognized holiday. So, are they gonna get time and a half in addition to the $28.30 or is that with the time and a half?
They're, they're only going to get the $28.30.
They're not gonna get time and a half?
They're not gonna get time and a half.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Anything else?
Comfort Keepers, where is their rates at? The new company? Cause I didn't see that.
Their, their rates have not changed. Uh, I would have to go back and reference them. I don't have them available.
Okay, so they weren't here, okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an Area Aging Contract Amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fifteen dash, or seventeen dash zero zero five three.
This is a motion to award the replacement for the bridge.
I'm sorry, he did, okay, that was in both of them. Okay. You know, Jason.
Did we do that?
Jason, come back for one second. No, we didn't do that. We didn't do that. We, we did it. He brought it into it, but we didn't vote it.
Okay.
Stand up there for one second, Jason. Seventeen dash zero zero five three. I'd like to make a motion for AAA Comfort Keepers Contract Personal Care, February 13th, 2017 through June 30th, 2017. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Jason, real quick, um, we got a lot of calls about this. Um, who, who do we call about if someone needs help with their taxes? A lot of the seniors are calling and calling and asking questions, how they go through area aging and you have the university involved?
University.
Talk a little bit about that?
University of Scranton can assist with, with the taxes and as well, the United Way has programming to help with the taxes and the Voluntary Action Center also.
And what's the phone number if anybody has any questions? Cause a lot of people sometimes need a little help with their...
They can contact our office, we can hook them up with any service that they need. 570-963-6740. We'll direct them to wherever, whatever service, whatever service they possibly can be hooked up with, we will find for them.
Okay, Jason, thank you. Thanks. Okay. Seventh, motion seventeen dash zero zero five five.
This is a motion to award the replacement of the Orchard Drive Bridge in Newton Township to the lowest responsible bidder, AR Popple Construction, for an amount of $266,000. Mr. Gary Cavill, the county engineer, is here to explain this to us.
Good morning, Gary.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is for a box culvert in Orchard, on Orchard Drive in Newton Township. It's about an 18-foot clear span. Uh, we originally had $450,000 allocated in the budget for this and it came in at $266,000.
Good, very good. Uh, does the board have any questions for Mr. Cavill? Great job as usual, very good. Okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding the replacement of the Orchard Drive Bridge in Newton Township to the lowest responsible bidder, AR Popple Construction, for $266,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, 220 Linden Street, Scranton. Um, I was very touched at the way you honored Walter this morning and Commissioner O'Malley...
Heroes among us.
I, I know you take a lot of criticism over many issues, but I'm very impressed by the way you continue to recognize World War II veterans. Um, every day I read the newspaper and very often I see an obituary of a World War II veteran and it's very bittersweet because you're so proud that they served our country and it's so sad to see them passing away one by one.
Living history.
It is living history. Uh, people may not realize that Lackawanna County, um, provided as many men and women in, in uniform during World War II as any other area of the country. And, uh, that's quite true. Part of our honored history. So, thank you for having done that. Um, I'd like to point out that from February 28th, which is this coming Tuesday through Sunday, March 5th, the Friends of the Scranton Public Library be hosting another book sale at the Marketplace at Steamtown. We're located right in front of Crunch on the second floor. Now, we do this four times a year and I can't remember ever seeing any one of you come visit us. So, I'm asking you, come visit us. Um, we do this four times a year.
What's the date, Joan? I'll be there, what, we'll be over.
From Tuesday, February 28th through Sunday, March 5th, okay?
And what's the time?
Uh, starting when the mall opens till the mall closes. So, if you know when the mall's open, there will be.
Okay.
Um, you know, these are books that have been weeded from the library, uh, to make room for new books or they're donations from the general public. Uh, and, uh, the proceeds that we make are right back to the library. What the Friends have been doing, um, recently is we've been supporting the Children's Library. For example, on April 9th at 2:00 PM at the Children's Library, we'll be funding the Reptile Day. They'll be bringing in live reptiles. We've brought in raptors before and...
Kids will love that.
They do. You know, I mean, it's wonderful. Uh, but it, it's a way of supporting the Scranton Public Library, which as a nonprofit organization, gives back so much to the county, as do all the libraries in the library system. And we have things for children, we have things for the elderly and the homebound. If you're elderly and homebound and you want a book or a tape, we'll mail it to you postage free and you mail it back postage free. You need access to a computer, come on down. We have the computers and we'll even train you how to use them. Um, the library is an asset for the community. So, this is a fundraising effort that we do to make sure that the library continues in its mission. If there is one nonprofit organization in the county that's worth its weight in gold, it's the Scranton Public Library.
Joan, we saw your picture in the paper too. I wanted to tell you, was that for this upcoming event?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Nice picture.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wallace, about when do you think you'll be making some kind of recommendation with regard to, uh, property reassessments?
My goal is, uh, the very beginning of April. I'm getting toward the end of it now. I've had, uh, several meetings. I have a few more scheduled yet and I'll be meeting in Harrisburg with C-CAP with Attorney Fredrickson and myself. So, we're, we're trying to get some, uh, information together to present to the Commissioners.
Um, we're looking very, uh, closely towards that, um, also because it's dovetailing with, um, um, PEL making its recommendation on what to do with the city of Scranton and its recovery effort. And looking down the road on the financial condition of Scranton, uh, it's gonna make a difference whether or not we're looking at property reassessments or not in terms of, um, what's gonna happen with real estate taxes in the future.
If you have some information you want to share with us, I'd, I'd be happy to meet with you and get that information included in the recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and last but not least, as I was listening to the engagement letters for the various audits being approved, uh, and you're preparing obviously for your county audit, I see that a lot of these, um, firms have been in place for years. At what point in time do you open them up to an RFP for competition? How does that work?
Uh, Mr. Durkin is here to explain that. Generally, if we're pleased with the performance and the cost is relatively the same, we usually use the same, uh, companies. But Mr. Durkin may want to amplify on that. Let me just squeeze in here. Um, pardon me. Uh, most recently, we did an RFQ process three years ago and from that RFQ process, um, the Office of Youth and Family Services engaged Brian Kelly. Um, I believe we engaged an auditor for, um, our daycare office three years ago. Uh, most of the other audits, as Mr. Wallace explained, most of the other audits that we're doing, uh, are either in the process of contracts for a number of years or in some cases, except for the Brian Kelly audit, uh, the McGrail Pension Audit, the, um, Drug and Alcohol Audit for the Barbetty Firm and the, uh, Redevelopment Authority Audit for Joe Lou's Firm are all on a year-to-year basis. And as Mr. Wallace explained, we are very, very satisfied with the services that these firms have, have, um, provided and so we haven't opened those particular audits up in, in some time. But periodically, and as I said, most recently, I remember three years ago, doing an RFQ for audit services for a number of different, uh, entities, but I don't recall having done any since then. But periodically, when, um, audits come up, we, we do, uh, an RFQ process. Most recently, like I said, about three years ago.
The reason I mention it is, I have no reason to suspect that there is anything amiss with, uh, the current auditors that you have for these various entities. Um, but if you look back in the corporate world, where, um, a lot of auditors failed to uncover rampant fraud and this includes the Big Eight audit firms. Uh, one of, one of the conclusions that, that Congress made was that there was too long of a close and continuous relationship between, uh, the corporate entity that was being audited and their audit firm. These people were using the same auditors for decades and they were just too cozy. So, I, I'm just saying that it might be a good policy periodically to open up, uh, the audits to new bids. Uh, if the current auditor is the best qualified, that's probably the one you're gonna select again. Uh, but you shouldn't, you know, just repeat it again and again and again because it seems an easy thing to do. Um, I just put that as a cautionary tale. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Thanks, Joan.
Joan, just want to, this is information for you. You know, a lot of, um, a lot of municipalities don't even get their audits done on time. And the big thing with us being fiscally sound...
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's tremendous.
Like, we've been, our audits are done on time since 2011 to 2016, every, 2006 to 15 and, you know, we're working on 16 right now.
No, I, I...
So, no, 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 I'm not saying anything, but I just want you to know, like, because that's the big thing with our A-stable bond rating and...
Yes.
Our losing the surveillance fee and the great rates that we got on the refinancing, which we're gonna be doing more refinancing this year. But it took time to get to that point. Like, there was times when past administrations went two years without there even being an audit. So, it's really, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're...
No, I mean, that's a lot of...
But there won't be decades, don't worry.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that there's anything amiss. I'm just saying that, um, there should be, uh, even if it's only once every three or five years, you know, you open it up. If that, those firms are still the best qualified, they're, they're being, obviously, they're gonna get selected again. But, you know, it, it should be open to competition. After all, uh, you know, this is the county and everyone should have an opportunity, uh, to provide the service. And you may get a better firm, you don't know. Uh, but it's sometimes good to have a fresh look from a different eye. And if you look at what happened with, um, uh, Enron and when, uh, they had to make a lot of changes then, one of the recommendations made to Congress was that they, you know, you change auditors. And even though that didn't come off completely, the, you know, the, the primary engagement officer had to change, cause you can't keep having the same one again and again, cause they found, uh, a history of, you know, people getting too comfy and too cozy. And we're talking big firms, Ernst &amp; Young, uh, Arthur Andersen, which went down with Enron, and others, you know. It, it's good, uh, to open it up to a fresh perspective sometimes. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Commissioner, one, one, one comment on that is, in the past administration, they did look at, uh, bringing in a new auditor, particularly for the county audit. However, it's such a massive volume, uh, the prices were so, there was such a discrepancy in the prices, cause the audit firm you have, they have all the information, they have the background. When you bring in a new firm, they have to start from square one and collect all the information and go forward with it. And the price differential was so much that they just, they're so great, they just stayed with the, uh, the current firm.
I was here in 2012. We did the 2011 audit. It was the first one that had been on time, like...
Correct.
Years. And, uh, Tom Durkin was here, Steve Berkowski, and it really mattered because all of our auditors, you know, they cross their Ts and dot their Is, you know, I mean, they do a great job. Like you said, compared to other municipalities, you know, we're always on top of the game on this situation.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, Tom Durkin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Thanks. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? Justine Jaeger, 500 Vine Street. Joan, you're gonna put me out of the job. I know, she's gonna put me out of the job. No.
No, Joan, let me tell you something.
Love of the library.
I saw Joan's picture in the paper and I, I know that, you know, I mean, she, she walks and talks and, you know, I mean, the library really matters and it does.
Oh, yes, it does.
It does. There's a, a lot of people, I mean, really, if you have an opportunity, visit your local library.
That's the truth.
A lot of people just don't.
Tell all your friends.
Does matter.
But, um, today I wanted to talk a bit about Bookmobile, upcoming events and plans. Um, every year, we have our St. Patrick's Day Parade and we are honored to participate, uh, for a number of years now and you will see us again, March 11th. So, come out, say hi, celebrate. We are, as we move into planning for our summer, we are looking to expand our service area, uh, farther out, um, along, let's say, outer reaches of the county. We do visit a lot of places out yonder, but, um, we're looking to do more with that. And so, summertime is always a great time for us to reconsider our schedule. Uh, we have a waiting list of people who want the service. We put them in at that time as well and a lot of great community events like Art in the Park and...
You're gonna bring that up? You're there, you're there at all, all four of them?
Yes, we'll be there at all four of them. So, again, everybody is welcome to come visit the Bookmobile and as always, open invitation to the Commissioners to come out with us for a day.
We always try to make it out to...
Yeah, I know you're busy.
Great participation, though. We, I try to make it to all of them. I know the other Commissioners do too.
Yeah.
You know, from Covington to...
Oh, they're fun.
To all of our great parks throughout the county.
They're fun and like, and, and if you would ever like to just see a regular business day, we are more than welcome. So, thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay. Commissioners of the business, Commissioner Cummings.
Um, Joan, thank you so much for bringing that up. I have brought that up, but Donnie answered my question, so I'm happy with that answer. That's a good one. Thank you. Um, Justin, thank you again for your work and yes, I do, to both Joan and, and Justin, I do appreciate the work and I love the Bookmobile and I look forward to seeing, uh, some of the events at the Arts in the Park. Um, recently in the news, we heard some good news that, uh, legislation was passed for paycheck protection in our State Senate and I'm hoping that that continues to go forward so that we can make sure that, uh, no funds from dues are going towards political activity. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, on March 8th is our first Music Borough Building, uh, meeting out of office. So, thank you Commissioners for standing by my commitment on out-of-office, uh, uh, meetings and, uh, I know I've gotten a lot of calls saying, "When is your next meeting outside and in the evening?" And that's when it will be. So, for anyone who, uh, is interested, it's March 8th at 7:00 PM in the Music Borough Building, uh, 715 Main Street. Um, uh, here I am again. I find myself having to correct some things in the Scranton Times. Okay, let's see, I was informed, I, I'm talking in regards to Mr. Gregor's, uh, hiring and, and I don't want to demean his, his abilities because that's not what my response is and I want to make sure that he's aware of that and my fellow Commissioners are aware of that as well. Um, because I want him to have a really good reception, but I guess that was already nixed by our local Scranton Times articles. Um, you know, I was informed of the hiring of Mr. Gregor after the fact. Um, how does that happen? How does that happen? Well, we saw it happen with Andy Wallace. You know, this is the way it's done here. You need two signatures by two Commissioners and I wasn't one of them. That's just the way it is. I wasn't aware of the position being filled. I wasn't a party in the decision-making process to hire him and my signature is not on the approval to hire form. Mr. Gregor was hired with the two, the signatures of two majority Commissioners, Patrick O'Malley and Jerry Nateriani. Andy Wallace sent an email to the Scranton Times. His email stated, "Justin McGregor, 34, of Dunmore, has been appointed by the Lackawanna County Commissioners as the new Deputy Director of Human Resources." What is the Scranton Times print? That he was hired by Lorraine Cummings, Patrick O'Malley, and Jerry Nateriani. I mean, they, I never got a call to confirm that in that collective county Commissioner's name, I was included in that because I wasn't. I was not included in that. And that happens and I'm not complaining about that. That's just the way its proper protocol was followed. That's the way it is. And, you know, sometimes I win, sometimes Pat wins, sometimes Jerry wins. That's what happens when you have a government that's working together and cooperating in different areas. We don't always win and we don't always get our say, but you know what? We all get our say every once in a while and it's a pretty good way to work, I think. You know, I mean, I think that shows that we are cooperating with each other, may not agree with each other, but we're getting things done. I mean, this is an effective government. We've, you know, under Commissioner O'Malley's leadership, I mean, really have done a lot of things and they're good. And under Commissioner Nateriani's leadership, for that matter, you've done some things that you're, you know, happy about and your party's happy about. I'm not, I'm the Republican, so that's the way that goes though. There's things that my party's very happy with and, you know, I think that when both sides are both happy and not happy at the same time, we're doing something right, all three of us are. So, you know, I just, I really find it disingenuous when I continue to get, even when I'm not even a part of the process, I'm somehow made to be a part of it and it didn't happen. I did not even receive a call from the Scranton Times to give a statement after the, you know, until when that article ran. Is that correct, Andy? I mean...
That's correct. I misphrased it when I wrote it. I put the Lackawanna County Commissioners collectively in the release and I should have specified the decision was made by Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Nateriani. I stand corrected.
But I don't think that that's your error. I think that when you said county Commissioners, that means two county Commissioners signed off. And it's, you know, the paper's responsibility to confirm who those Commissioners were and what they actually thought about the subject and not to infer that my name should have been associated with it or anybody else's for that matter. And then, you know, this is exactly why people have lost all faith in the media, okay? And most likely, the reason why the Scranton Times is having difficulty in downsizing their own, very own departments, I mean, I mean, we see what's happening. Another thing, it's really interesting, and Jerry, please don't take this the wrong way, but it's really interesting how rather than the Scranton Times put the names of the Democrats that signed off on this, they just put the Democrats said. You know, I guess whenever Jerry's involved in a vote, nothing's going, that's controversial, nothing is going to be reported, nothing. You know, I mean, not to mention the fact that, you know, we just on our payables, we have a bill for $26,000 from Attorney O'Brien to fight a lawsuit that's coming against Commissioner O'Malley and myself because somehow the minority Commissioner is not being directed towards him. And I understand that you have a problem with that, but, but these are the things that, you know, are never brought up. And my name, obviously, everybody knows, my name's in that paper every day of the week. I mean, I think I was only out of one this week and none of anything that was reported was actually based on interviews they did with me or confirmation of where I stood on an issue. And I hated to comment on this because I certainly don't want to make this gentleman that got hired feel bad because that's not my intention at all and I hope he understands that. And I hope both of the Commissioners that signed off understand that I, I'm not questioning your judgment on that at all. I'm just not. Because I know that you would stand by my decision as well. So, until we see what kind of work is being done, we can't judge someone and he's got the qualifications and that was, certainly relates to me after he was hired, correct, Andy?
That's correct. I did meet with you after the fact.
Thank you. The other issue is, is that, you know, it's a shame that I have to complain about the Scranton Times because sometimes they actually do a really good job. This article in the paper regarding the finance costs for the solicitors in Scranton, this, this is an outrage, what happened here. This is what I'm talking about when I'm saying we need to be more careful in regards to overseeing authorities and boards throughout the county. You know, this can't happen here in the county because we have a code of ethics that we have to follow with our attorneys. They can't do this. My concern is there's, you know, a load of authorities that they do what they want without our say, okay? That was just proven, we don't have a say in that. And I think that as the county Commissioners, we should come up with some kind of resolution of sorts to prevent that in happening with any of the authorities that are, we're currently able to appoint Board members to. And I'd like to get the opinion of John on that.
You could request a resume?
Yeah.
I think what you're referring to is the, there's a policy that solicitors who work for the county...
Yes.
And this was brought up a year ago when the bond was going through. It would be illegal for us to get paid extra. We're paid a salary, we don't like it, we don't take the job. That's just the way it is. Unfortunately, that does not hold true with apparently some agencies from the city of Scranton. We had a guy come in here and complain about that at one meeting, Bob Bolus. It was, I think, around a million dollars.
Yeah.
And from what I've been told, I haven't seen, there were one-sentence statements for a couple hundred grand for legal fees. I've never heard of that, but whatever, okay? That's not for us to decide. But I'm not aware that the policy that applies to the solicitors who work for this county also applies to authorities.
Right.
And what I think you're asking, especially in light of the fact that two of the lawyers that are involved in that are either getting paid for something on the authorities for the county or they're on boards, they're on county boards. So, what I think you were requesting was that maybe some directive be issued by the Commissioners, if they're in agreement, to have the county administrator submit to the various boards the policy that the county has with a strong recommendation that they adopt it also, basically so that there are no articles like that in the paper about a county authority.
Yes, thank you.
Because these separate authorities do bond issues and they do purchases, they do, they do a lot of things and as the Commissioners, you have no control over what goes on. You may not have control over the authorities either, but at least you've told them. And I think it could be done by resolution, I think it could be done by motion, or it could be done by simple directive if the Commissioners are in agreement.
This is what I'd like to see done. If we'd like, if we could have the Chief of Staff and our Chief Solicitor looking to see what the authorities are doing before we vet it out. Because just so the viewing audience understands, our refinancing, our loan for the globe, vet it to the end, the least amount we could possibly, possibly compare to any other governments, the cheapest way possible to make sure our refinancing and our new loan was done properly. So, I want people to realize that, that we're not wasting your money.
That's right.
We're spending your money because we understand that, you know, we're trying to stretch a dime for the citizens of our community and it really matters. And I think we did a great job last year between the refinancing and the loan and this year we do refinancing, it'll be the same exact thing. We're going to make sure, nobody's going to become a millionaire walking out of here. They're going to get paid what they, for what they do. That's the way it's always going to be.
Yeah, and we follow that. We have that as our policy here in the county and we're protected against that, like John is saying.
I think...
But the authorities are not.
Commissioner, I think what she, she was asking for was just some assent from the Commissioners to have the Chief of Staff just write a suggestion to the authorities that here's our policy, maybe it's a good idea to follow it if anything comes up in the future. It's very simple. I think it can be done that way.
Yeah, no, it can happen here.
Sure. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, resolution, you could make a resolution.
Do you want to set it, want to take a look and see what they're doing at this point and then we'll make a decision for the next meeting and we'll talk about it at the agenda meeting?
That's fine.
Okay. But no, I totally agree with you. Like you said, we're here to stretch a dime. That's the way it's going to be and we're going to make sure it's this way for the next three years, hopefully beyond. Commissioner Nateriani?
I think it's, you know, we don't have any control over what the authorities do.
No.
But we can set forth our policy and encourage them to accept that.
Exactly right.
That being said, that's a great idea. And I agree with Joan earlier saying that, you know, maybe at some point we should start to send out RFQs on some audit situations. But other than that, I'm fine and thank you all.
Okay, so, the Solicitor and the Chief of Staff vet that out so maybe we can talk about it for the next meeting. Commissioner Nateriani, anything do you like to say on the Commissioners' new business?
No, that's it.
Nothing?
I'm good.
No, I just thank everybody for coming in and I'm headed to Washington, man.
There you go. At this time, I'd like to bring up our, our HR Director, Brian Lotny, who's leaving us. He's had a great five years here and he's going to be terribly missed and we'd like to thank you for everything you do. Contract negotiations aren't easy, grievances are hard and I'm sure that, you know, it's, it was a great learning experience.
Absolutely.
And I know you're going on to another position. We'd rather you stay here, but like you said, birds got to fly, so we understand. So, talk, talk to us, Brian.
Briefly, it's been a wonderful, almost five years with the county. I've learned so many wonderful things from some great people who I will truly miss. Some days were harder than others, like you said, contract negotiations are not always the easiest thing, but when you work with so many great people to help get the job done, it makes each day just a little bit easier. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity and instilling their trust in me to work day-to-day with our, with our seven great unions and making sure that we get the best bang for the buck and making sure that all of our labor relations were, were up to speed and maintaining positive relationships with our employees, our directors and our administration. I just thank you for that. It was, like you said, there's some things that you just can't put a price tag on and experience is one of them and that's one thing that I'll definitely be able to walk away with.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for everything that you've, that the three of you have done for me, treating me as, as, as an instilled cabinet member and having that trust in me. I appreciate that. It's, it means, it means the absolute world to me.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, Brian, you've done a lot of work for me, so thank you so much for everything and...
You're welcome.
I know I drive you crazy, but, um, God, I hope that's why we're here. No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Thanks for the great job, Brian. Hate to, hate to see you leave.
Thank you, sir.
Understand the new opportunity you have and good luck in your endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My father used to always say, he said, "Birds got to fly and fish got to swim," so I understand.
That's true.
You know, this is a new opportunity, it's a bigger thing for you, a bigger opportunity for you, but congratulations and thank you for everything that you do for us.
Thank you.
And it really matters.
Thank you.
And good luck in the new position.
I appreciate it. I will thank you.
Even though we'd rather you here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.